Was that?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, September 8th, 2014 Board of Selectments meeting to order. Anybody taping the meeting? Okay, let it be known that Mr. Sadek, The Standard Times, and our Comcast, Channel 95 is taping. Better known as Lynn.
Freakin'.
Yes, you coined that. Freakin'.
Oh!
She coined that. Anyway, 6 o'clock, call to order, 6:05 award bid for the 2014 tanker apparatus submitted by the police chief Gary Sylvia.
Fire chief.
Fire chief, did I say police chief? You can do anything, Gary. Board of Health, variant, Buena Vista. We have action items relative to the Highway Surveyor in Chapter 90, discussed letter from DCR regarding acquisition of approximately 75 acres of land, discuss and vote deadline for article submission for the special town meeting. We'll have the town administrators report, as well as some action items on his list. Approval of the minutes from the April 8th, 2014 Board of Selectments meeting. Discuss dates for setting of union negotiations. We'll vote to discuss on dates to meet with DESI and DOR and the three town regional school committee, which is also part of the town administrator report. We have something under personnel, and we'll be discussing some new business and old business as well. So with no further ado, anybody here for public discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will now take the award of the bid for the tanker by Fire Chief Gary Sylvia.
Did you guys there copy my letter?
We have it in front of us.
Basically, we got two bids. One from Baux, Georgia, and one from Iowa. Baux was a lower bidder. They were actually, out of the two, they're the only ones that came up with the money we had allocated to the grant. So I recommend we want to get to Baux.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, you have to go first.
Well, I'll entertain, and then we'll do discussion.
182-650.
Right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
And I'll second that in the amount of 182-650. Any discussion?
I just want to ask, that price, is that exactly what you guys need?
That's what we're going to get.
But that's what you wanted?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor are signed by I.
Aye.
Aye. Now, I know we had a little discussion off the record, and you know what, at the last Board of Selectments meeting, I did challenge you for the ALS. Did you do it?
Never believe what you see.
Just so we're on camera.
Is this photoshopped or what?
Okay.
This really needs to go on, on camera.
Can you bring that up?
That's Gary, I could tell.
Can you bring that up here?
Sure. Gary, bring it over there.
You put that wrong camera, that's Gary!
It is, right?
Absolutely.
Is that count?
No.
We'll do something else then.
Now, we're on camera, he knows, in case he missed the memo, he has been challenged. And you and the police chief can do it together.
Maybe.
Okay, that would be great.
Hold on, Mac.
Well, maybe you'll be, you know...
Maybe you can eat your mouth shut.
Maybe you can challenge him, right? All right, Gary, anything else going on?
That's it?
All right, we will be discussing union negotiations coming up, and I'm sure that Jack will get in touch with you with some dates.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And Gary, you don't have to do that on film.
Oh, yeah. Never tell them we're around here. Okay. We have some time, because unfortunately, this is, we have to...
Time?
Yeah, so we'll go forward with some stuff. Chuck?
Yeah?
Come on down.
He's in the hot seat now.
Yep.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Fantastic.
Great.
The winter rapid recovery program, the governor gave us $60,305 for, here is the final paperwork, we spent $60,274.67, and some signatures, so these bills have already been paid, and we can get reimbursed.
You gotta give $34 in change back?
Yeah, no, you don't get it back. $30.33 is where we came under budget. So that goes to the...
Great state of Massachusetts.
Great state of Massachusetts.
Make a motion, well, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
To sign?
To sign the amount of $62.74.67. And I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one? That's it?
That's it.
You have nothing else going on?
I've got half a second, we can bring up the speed on a couple things.
Okay, sounds good.
Bridge on Route 79. I've got, I met with the engineers again last Friday, and they got the copy, thank you, of their proposal. One for you.
Thanks.
One for you. Okay, one for you, one for Mr. Baumgast, I don't remember if he's seen...
Yeah, you might as well get that to Ally.
Okay. GPI is the engineer company, that's the same company that did Forge Road and Gurney Road, which I think both projects were more than successful. This basically is to get us to a stage where we can put it out to bid, we're hoping to do the work now, pay for it with Chapter 90, do the work over the winter, have it go out to bid in spring, and have the work started next summer. We're gonna do it a multi-phase thing, we're gonna do the grout first, that will hold the bridge together. They were thinking we can do the grout without closing the bridge, keep the road traffic, we might have to limit to one lane, but do the grout work, let that set for the following year, following summer, we'll shut down Route 79 for a couple months around summertime, and pour a momentary slab like we did over on Gurney Road. And then that'll bring that bridge right up to...
What bridge is this on, 79?
Which one?
After the second set of railroad tracks.
Okay.
Which was called Maple Tree Crossing.
Okay, and that's the total cost?
That's just the engineering.
Engineering services.
Yeah. That will, that's all the engineering studies and all the hoopla to go with it. Luckily, we've got a pretty good handle on that type of bridge, because this would be the third stone arch bridge that we've done in three years. So GPI is very well-versed at this type of construction, so I think it's a perfect fit. I think Gurney Road really went flawlessly, and, you know, traditionally, we love to say tear it down in front of the new one in, but I'm not even going down that route.
They did Gurney and what other?
They did Gurney and they did Forge.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the total cost is gonna be of the reconstruction cost?
I would say it would be almost identical to whatever Gurney Road was, so I don't want to say no fault. The grouting, the first phase, you're probably looking at 200,000, 300,000 maybe, which I'm hoping to cover with chapter nine. If it's much more than that, then we'll have to, you know, put a, go get the grout to bond for it.
Debt exclusion.
For a debt exclusion, or just, yeah, go to town meeting and say, hey, we need the money.
All right, can you give me the timeline again, please?
Engineering, if you, if we all are in agreement with that agreement, submit the Chapter 90 stuff, engineering will happen this fall and throughout the winter. Hopefully, go out to bid early next spring, construction to start, the end of June. To grout it, you're probably only looking at a month to do it, so it'll be next summer, get the grout done, and then more likely than not, we'll let that sit for a while until the following summer, and then we'll get the slab down.
All right. Can we, we can go out to bid, but if we don't have the funding and the funding source, we can't even start work on it.
We can do it.
Well, I'm pretty sure...
If it comes in, right.
Yeah, it should. It's, the grout, there shouldn't be a problem, the grout coming under that, say, a $400,000, $500,000.
But that's gonna eat away most of your...
That'll eat up all the Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
But it's either that, or the state is threatening that if we don't do something, they're gonna put a weight limit on the bridge.
Right.
So if we put a three-ton weight limit on Route 79, that's gonna cause all kind of havoc, school buses, everything.
Like it did before.
Like it did before. So we're trying to avoid that. This seems to be the best, quickest scenario, because we've got more, we, we as a community have more experience with stone arch bridges than any other community in Massachusetts right now. We've done, we've done Elm Street, we've done Gurney Road.
I get that, but I would hate to see, because we have so many other projects in town for Chapter 90 funds, and the funds are so limited.
Mm-hmm.
I would hate to see us eat away at all Chapter 90 funds when we could more than likely pursue another avenue. But we wouldn't be able to do that until annual town meeting, or, or we would have to call a special town meeting.
We have to get this phase, this, no matter what, this has to be done for us, the engineering.
You think it'll come in under $200,000 to $300,000?
The actual construction?
No, no.
The grout work?
Yeah, the grout work.
The grout work, yes. Yeah, that'll be, again, they'll know as we get into the engineering.
So if you do it in two phases, you figure in, you could have some additional money to do other roads.
Correct, correct. Those, with law, and again, we don't know until GPI gets in there and starts, I mean, they've got a good head start on this type of project, and working with this community, they know the ins and outs of the conservation and planning, and all the groups, they know the people. Yeah, I think it's, we've got the Chapter 90 money available now, we've got 210,000, give or take, so I would suggest that we put 138,000, or whatever the total was, towards the engineering. That gets, that gets the ball rolling, yeah, 138,200.
Yeah.
That gets the ball rolling.
This is the Chapter 90 money for fiscal year 15.
Right.
Correct? Yes, yes. And last year, we had roughly $100,000 left over to review. With the projects that we've got going now, and the money that's accounted for, we still have approximately 200,000, 210,000, and we're at that page.
So that's why you're offsetting the engineering studies, okay.
Yeah, so the 138 will, you know, when you're all said and done, you're gonna have roughly 70 grand left for Chapter 90.
Have you guys talked about this?
No.
No?
Nope.
None, Jack?
Yes, go.
Going back to an earlier item, just to be sure, on the rapid road recovery project, I got a letter today, I was hoping you'd gotten it here early, so I could talk to you about this right away, so...
Sorry?
It says that the projects obligated under the program should be completed by September 3rd. They're gonna be done?
We just signed the final reports.
I know, I know.
That means they're done.
They're already done.
They're done, they've been done.
They're already done.
Paperwork's being turned in tomorrow. Bills have all been paid.
Okay, good.
They were completed, we've been just waiting for detailed slips and the like, the projects were completed.
Okay.
The project was completed, the final day we worked was July 14th, so the projects have been done, we've just been waiting for detailed slips and the final bills from the companies.
Sure.
We're way ahead of, on that curve.
Thank you.
All right, so, do you have any questions about this?
No, good.
What I would suggest, I've got the Chapter 90 stuff all drawn up, but it's, I just got this Friday afternoon late, so I would suggest you all look at that.
All right, so, yeah, we need to look at, look at this, have town council review this. I also want you to think about, there's gonna be another inspection on the South Main Street Bridge in October. So we gotta keep that in our heart.
South Main Street, they're not talking about closing down.
I understand that, but...
That's it, go ahead.
I understand they're not immediately talking about that, but they haven't done an inspection on that since...
They do that, they do that, no, that hasn't been that long. They did an underwater inspection on that not too long ago.
And what, they just come down?
No, not that one.
The South, the South Main Street Bridge, their, their main concern is from the waterline down, the scour. They're not hugely concerned with, oh my god, they're not talking weight limits, they're not talking anything. This bridge, with our last bridge report, we got a letter from Mary Jo Perry, District 5, needed action is needed, if not, we will look into postponing the bridge by weight limit.
So we've got this bridge here, we've got South Main Street, that may need some work.
Yep.
What else have we got, bridges, is that it?
I think that's it. Those are our main bridges.
Those are the bridges, yeah.
The other three have been fixed.
That's right, that's right. Structurally, like I said, from the waterline up, South Main Street's in pretty good shape. Different type of construction, it's a stone arch bridge, but that's, that's a cut stone bridge compared to these that are fieldstone bridges. And what's happened with that is, over time, stones have dropped out, the flooding, the water's raced through there.
Yeah, that's why they got it.
Right, we'll throw in, we'll, they'll pump grout in it to lock it together, and then eventually, they'll, we'll just put a momentary slab and go over the top, and it's, it'll be just like Gurney Road, be just like Elm Street, 100 years. Once we get 12.
All right, let's put this, let's have town council review it. Can you guys sit down and talk about this a little bit more in depth?
Sure.
And then put it on for our next meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna throw one more thing at you, just so you can review it at your own leisure, and find it, snowplow rates.
Okay.
I'm getting ready to send the snowplow contracts, and I want to change some rates up, and I really kinda want your blessings. This is the average, this is, the chart on the top is what we did last year with area communities. Can you give that to me, please? You'll see that we paid 56, 58, and 60. The average was 64, 43, 67, 63, and 66.25. I wanna, as the paper says, I want to increase the hourly rates by $5 an hour, and delete the cutting edges. Cutting edges are a huge pain in the rear end for me, and if the contract applies to me, and I'm not saying that it's, it's a huge problem, but if a subcontract applies to me for 10 hours, and at the end of the storm, he goes out and plows 50 driveways, I'm paying for it, and the town's paying for his cutting edge. Most communities have forgotten the way we're supplying cutting edges, we've done it forever, but by keeping the plow rates where they're at, which, we're the lowest, we're the lowest in southeastern Massachusetts, and I delete the cutting edges, I'm not gonna have anybody plowing snow. It's hot enough now to keep good people here. The same truck that plows for me for $58 an hour can work for the state for $90 an hour. So it's, you know, it's a no-brainer, buy in, buy in truck.
How does the cutting edge work?
Cutting edge is the way up out of the snowplow.
Yeah, I know that, I know what it is, but how does it work as far as you providing a cutting edge? How often do you provide a cutting edge?
Depends on the season, depends on the route. It can be two to three cutting edges a year, which could possibly...
For a guy? For a truck?
Not, again, it depends. I've got some guys that will go through three cutting edges in a season, and I'll have one guy go through one cutting edge a season.
So what's the difference? Why?
Chip seal road compared to non-chip seal road, the roots, the condition of the roads, the guy that plows a nice, brand-new paved road, it doesn't wear as quick.
Okay. How much is a cutting edge?
Anywhere between, say, 125 to 250, depending on the size. And you, my biggest issue is not everybody has brand X cutting edge, because then, then you're getting into getting things specially stamped, and that costs more money, you know. It's just a suggestion, I've been talking about it for the last eight years, probably.
How would the plow guys want to do it?
If they get $5 an hour, I think it'll, it's an easier bill to swallow, because, I mean, they're not dummies either, they know what other towns are paying, and...
The other towns that supply the cutting edges, either.
Some towns are, Jack, but most, most have gotten away from it. It's just, it's just one of those things. Think on it.
All right, thank you.
I wanna get, I wanna get contracts in, I wanna get contracts in the mail.
There's one more.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If you increase the rates...
Yep.
Do you have enough money in your budget?
There's never enough money in Snow Nice.
Snow, it carries over the farm, yeah.
Yeah, never will be enough money in Snow Nice.
Yeah.
Not unless you do, it's, it's just not possible.
You got the best budget there is. At the end of the year, it rolls over.
For Snowplow.
We want action on that in two weeks.
Yeah.
If we could, yeah, just, I just wanted to bring it to you, guys can review it, think about it, do whatever you want, and I said, if you want to raise it by three, if you don't want to raise it at all, and...
But your recommendation is to raise it.
Yeah, but I don't want to, by raising it that $5, we're still probably the lowest paying, yeah, we are the lowest paying, still the lowest paid municipality in southeastern Massachusetts.
So we're not gaining anything here.
No, I actually wrote down some other figures, if you can go from there.
Should we go to something else?
I was looking at 63, 65, 67, but we can talk about that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I didn't want to go too crazy, and that's that.
All right, thanks, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
All right, Board of Health, come on over.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So how are you feeling?
Good.
Yeah? Settling in? Awesome.
Busy, really busy. The proposed site plan for built, for this building is demolition and reconstruction, but they're looking to utilize the existing septic system.
Before we go further, have all the letters been notified?
They have.
And do you have the green...
I have all the greens.
Green tags?
And you don't?
We're gonna put them as part of the record, so it's on there. And are any of the butters present? Okay, and can you state your name for the record, please?
Hello, Peter Chalkis.
Okay.
Miranda.
All right, of what address?
15 Brennville, 11.
15 Brennville, 11.
Okay, thank you. Nathan and Jennifer Tenneyer?
Next one, maybe, it's definitely him.
Okay, Anne Boat, Nick Rupire, John Saroyes, Rosemary Hardy, Nancy Sullivan, David and Dorothy Vello, Philip Chalkis and Mary, and Corey Benedictus, and Tom and Rosemary Barnes. Just state for the record that those letters have been notified, and the green slips have been issued, okay? It's all yours.
All right, so like I stated, the building is demolition and reconstruction, but they want to use the same septic system. The proposed site plan requires a variance from the foundation setback to the existing leaching bed, which is 20 feet.
Okay.
The applicant proposes to reduce the 20 feet setback to 11.5 feet. The engineer has proposed to install a waterproof membrane on all foundation surfaces within the 20 feet of the existing leaching area. Today, Mr. Pilarella has required, was required to conduct a Title V inspection, and that passed the criteria.
Okay. Do you, and your recommendation would be...
I would, I would actually endorse the proposed site plan, and ask the board to grant a variance with the following conditions.
Okay.
I wrote those down, I have to just read my notes.
Yeah.
The insulation of the foundation membrane must be inspected by the town's building and health agent prior to backfilling. The foundation waterproof membrane and septic system leaching area be located and depicted on an as-built plan, and the proposed residential building be restricted to a maximum of three-bedroom, negating any future expansion or increased flow to the existing septic system. So no increased flow, and we'd have to just inspect the membrane.
Is that a deed restriction?
That's a deed restriction.
That's fascinating.
Questions?
Do you have a way out?
Actually, I probably have it.
So this here is gonna be the new foundation?
No, sorry.
Yeah, so in essence, it'd be, it'd be easier, because now they can actually put the membrane here. If it was the other way around, we'd have to put something on the leaching area.
So this is the leaching area.
Yeah.
Where's the tank?
The sanctuary.
So, and this is the house, which is gonna come out?
Yeah, and normally, it's supposed to be 20 feet away from the foundation wall.
And you're gonna be 11,700.
If I had 11.5, he said 11.7, give or take, 11.5 plus or minus.
Where's the well?
The well?
They have a...
It needs some water.
Yeah.
It says it is an existing well.
Yeah, but...
You're all right.
Right. They want a little water.
Yeah.
So in that, in that sense, this is gonna be, this is gonna actually be a better...
A better way.
A better way to solve this problem.
What, is that one of this?
Yeah.
One of this to me. All right, here you go. Entertain a motion.
Your, your recommendations to go with?
Yes.
With those conditions.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the variance.
And I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You, you, your bodies have, you have any issues?
No.
Your bodies don't have any issues, correct?
No.
Okay.
Actually, for... You guys sign?
No, we're not the chair of Board of Health, but we'll both sign.
Nice job.
Ally, do you want to?
Thank you. I'll get it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it, I, I have...
Does it work openly?
Yes.
Getting better?
Yeah, getting better.
Good.
But we've been, we've been busy, but in, in the future, I'd like to work on some tobacco regulations, and I'd like to bring that to the board, 17 policy decisions, and we'd have to review each, each question, vote yes or no on those questions, and we can actually adopt that to our regulation.
Okay, and I know that there was previous work on the marijuana dispensary, so there must be a file on that, and Carlton was also working on that, so maybe you guys can, you know, pick it up.
I have to actually speak to him, because Chapter National Lodge 90C, I think it is, anything with paraphernalia would fall under his jurisdiction, we just want to make sure these establishments don't sell everything under the sun.
Well, they won't, they're, they're restricted to one area.
They are.
Yeah. To a zone, yeah. We actually, I went to one establishment, where in our regulations, it says that self-serve displays will be locked. It wasn't, no.
Absolutely.
So we just gotta, we have to tighten down on certain things that maybe it felt so...
And you can, you can go, and when you go, and you tell them that, right?
Oh, yeah, when I did my regular inspection, I reached over and I grabbed, and said, you want all the cigars? And I just tested it, and I looked at it, and I didn't even know, and you locked it. It was a prime extract. It was a prime extract.
Sorry, and thanks for that work on Chipaway Road.
Yeah, there's quite a few housing-related issues.
We have, we have some housing issues that have, that have come up. We've given the residents a certain timeframe, and it didn't get that like that overnight. So I've been working with them. At first, I started with thirty days, just to see the progress. I've been on the phone with them. I've seen little progress, but I, at least we wanna work with them, try to get them on the right track. And then hopefully he doesn't have to go turn for the worse, but we really wanna help them out and see if they can clean up some of these properties.
Oh, yeah.
So you went to Water Street, that issue? You guys are working on that?
Actually, um, Jack, I, yeah, the building inspector's working on that.
And Brayley, too?
Yeah, Brayley.
Yeah.
Looking for...
Was there a fire there?
Uh, no, the Chipaway, there was a fire.
I know that there, I knew about the Chipaway, but it looked like there was a...
I think it was a long time ago there was a fire.
The, not Chipaway, I'm talking about Brayley.
Long time ago.
Oh, 'cause you saw the same?
No, somebody told me that, uh...
It looked like it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to follow up, but I believe the residents had moved out already. The problem is, are they gonna return and fix up the property?
Yeah.
Right, 'cause...
Because what happens?
And then what? I mean, does it stay like that?
Yeah.
Well, the owners are not capable of doing it themselves, correct? And the pan, the question of the pan is in doing.
On Chipaway?
No, 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 on Brayley.
Oh, on Brayley, okay. Yeah, we're all a little bit mad. Well, on Chipaway, there was insurance, there was an insurance issue, but, um...
So you got over to Chipaway then, huh?
I did, yeah. Uh, just for, uh, one more thing for Brayley. The, I know the daughter was interested in moving into the house or trying to fix it up, but, um, I believe there's some tax issues.
Oh, I wasn't even talking about that one. I know you have that one handled. I was talking about the other one on Chipaway, on Brayley.
I'll get another one.
Oh, you're talking about Pennyback?
Yeah.
I don't even think he's got any.
No, not yet, probably, but it looked like there was a fire there on one of the cars. It looked like one of the cars, right? That's why I thought.
No, I thought you were talking about the other house.
The other one, yeah, no.
There was a fire in the other house. My, my understanding was a long time ago.
Really? I didn't know that. But it looked like there was a car fire.
I've been getting a few calls here and there, and each time I've gone to the property, I've managed to speak to the resident.
And if there were a car fire over there?
Yeah, we saw it.
Oh, boy! All right, thanks.
We're working on it, and I'll keep you guys always posted.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I just, um, wanna take a, a little timeout right now and just welcome to people that just walked in. Hello, Representative Carol Fiola and Representative Paul Schmidt. Do you have anything?
Thank you. May we give you a brief report?
Oh, sure, but then you open yourself up to questions.
Wow, we're never afraid of those. We are never afraid of those, Selectwoman Pachico.
Applewood, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see all the friendly, familiar faces.
How are you? Crazy time for you guys.
Thank you for, uh, giving, giving us the opportunity to come in. Uh, we thought it appropriate to give you a brief update on our activities. Uh, the item that is underway right now is we're standing by to see how we can help on the issue of, uh, water at the elementary school. And we did pass a significant water bill in July, which has funds that we imagine could be used for some kind of a, 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 of a solution. So we're there, we're here for you, and, uh, we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you.
We'll meet with the water board and all of you, and, uh, just, just keep us posted on, uh, what you think are the best remedies, and then we'll access the department and try to get those funds released as, as appropriate, or apply for them as we, um, we put a plan together for that.
Are those grant funds? Do they require a town match? Do you know what the regulations are?
Well, they're both, there, there's grant money, uh, and there's several different pools within this program.
So once I think that you and the water board, uh, you know, come up with a plan or, or suggestions or, you know, ideas for what would be the best solutions, and maybe some rough pricing, then we could float that through the different funding pools, as the representative said, to see what might make sense. And so that's pretty much would be the starting point. Get an idea of what you think you need to do, and a rough idea of what type of costs we are talking about. And then we would sit down and float that up there and figure out which pools might make sense to access. So that is on the water.
Yeah, some are grant money, some are low-interest rate money, so...
Right, I mean, engineering services would, would be right up there because there's no water lines in that area. So to access water lines either through Chipaway or through Chase Road...
They'd have to come up, uh, Chipaway.
Yeah.
There's a line on Chipaway.
There is.
Does it come all the way to?
No, half, my...
It comes up...
Not even halfway, quarter of the way.
Maybe a quarter, a quarter of, maybe a half mile at the moment.
Yeah.
And then, but from there would be, come, continue up Chipaway to Bullock, and then...
To Bullock, and then...
Then you're right on Bullock, and then you'd hit, not only would hit the school, you'd hit the school, you'd hit this whole central area here, which would be very beneficial.
And so the other type of projects that we'd be talking about, as you know, we've instituted some regular meetings with the select board and the town administrator. I know we've, um, we're in touch right now about a date in September, so we'll be pulling that together, and this can be one of the topics that we talk about as well. The Senator, Senator Riddick, who completes our team for Freetown...
And who was disappointed that he couldn't make it tonight.
So he would be with us in that meeting as well, and we talk about that, and, um, continue on with some of the other discussions that we've had. Obviously, we have the transportation bond bill that, um, one of the things is the, is the sewer lines on Main Street. So we'll be following up on that, and we wanna talk about the others.
There was some money, as you know, for Chipaway and for Chase, so...
You guys will be good to us.
And of course, in the environmental bond bill, uh, there's some money for a visitor's center at the Freetown Oliver State Park, which, uh, I think will help educate area people about what a gem we got here.
Yeah.
And we've been working with some of your local advocates, of course.
I saw the French.
We are working with Barry a lot. The town is lucky to have people like that that want to, um, continue to improve and advocate for this gorgeous land that we have, this recreational land, and so we agree. Um, and I think I heard your Board of Health, um, Chair say that, uh, you know, it didn't happen overnight. Well, the same thing here. Nothing happens overnight, but we're on it, and, uh, we're pleased to work with them and all of you. So, so we, we need you to know we're here for you and for the town.
Well, I just wanna thank you for what you've done for us, um, you know, and I hope that you will continue to do for us, and I wish you the best of luck tomorrow.
Thank you, and I, I just wanna make the point that, and we appreciate that, and we wanna make the point that we have a very strong delegation down here, and when you, uh, work with the Senator and the two of us, it's not just the three of us, it's, it's, it's a dozen, uh, legislators on both sides of the aisle who are, who, who we can call on to help out.
And you've been excellent to us, and you've been very, as a select body, the three of you, and of course, uh, I refer to the third member of this, this team, uh, Mr. Vinegatner, but, um, we've been working well together, and we're gonna continue that to do whatever it is you need with the community.
Thank you.
The state is, uh, gonna take another piece of land from the state forest. There's a notification here, it's coming up later.
And, yeah, you were reading earlier today, Paul, and I did have an opportunity to talk to Karen Mello in the assessor's office with regards to this.
I did. I did. I haven't had a chance to brief Representative Fiola.
Are you gonna be able to stick around for the discussion, or can we take that up?
We can, actually, it's next.
It is?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, do you mind staying for that discussion?
Uh, we'd be happy to.
See, you don't know where you're gonna get yourself into. You guys have been very helpful to, to Freetown. I mean, in the short period of time that I've been in the selection, I, you know, applaud you guys, especially for setting up the meetings that we've been having, the quarterly meetings, and, uh, we look forward to having these meetings. I think we're, as a town, moving forward, and hopefully we'll continue, and we'll, uh, get that corner down here activated, you know?
It's a good project for...
Yes, yes. So, how we, how we got...
You might as well, because we're talking about this next. And this is a letter from DCR in accordance with provisions of three oh one fifty-one. This letter is to inform you that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting through its Department of Conservation and Recreation, has under consideration the acquisition of approximately seventy-five acres of land located off of north side of Slabridge Road in the town of Freetown. This property is currently landlocked, unmanaged open space in private ownership. If acquired by the Commonwealth, the property will be incorporated into the Freetown State Forest in use for conservation and recreation purposes. The property is shown on the enclosed locust map marked Exhibit A, and it just goes further to, to talk about this.
There's a gentleman here, I think.
Go ahead.
From the DCR.
Come on up.
Bring up your chair.
Do you know if we're supposed to jump in there, or...
Yes. And can you state your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Sean Preventure, and I'm the land protection specialist for DCR.
Hi, Sean. Hi, Fiola, how are you?
Good, thank you. Sure. So, uh, should I just tell you a little bit about the, the property? Do you have that exhibit map? It should have been on the back of the notice.
Yeah.
Do you have that?
Oh, I, I know it very well. So, um, this is, uh, about seventy-five acres, um, of property on the backside of a plant owned by Mr. Kenzendis. Cranberry bogs, which you'll see on the map right here. These, that seventy-five acres are wooded land, a lot of it is swamp, some of it is upland. Um, we've been, uh, speaking with Mr. Zendis for some time, trying to come to an agreement on, on the land, if he's willing to sell to us in the state for conservation purposes. He's kind enough to do so. I've been chatting for a number of years now. And we have an opportunity in this particular spot where you may have heard recently, the Department of Fish and Game, our sister agency, had a very successful, um, conservation project right up here. We call it the Kings Point Bogs, and I forget what the name may be, they've come up for it. And then, uh, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Freetown State Forest, has been working with the town to play a bill on their parcel that is immediately over the town line from the seventy-five acres that we're looking at right now. So what this seventy-five acres is, is the bridge. It's gonna connect, uh, these two acquisitions together and become, uh, part of, uh, Freetown State Forest, which was mentioned earlier, become part of that great facility and part of the larger southeastern Mass林as, as a whole. And these notices go out as a part of our policy. And I'm just curious if there are any questions?
Paul, do you have questions?
Well, we have a, Jack, I alluded to it, uh, you asked the, Rick Schmidt, who was talking to Karen Mello. Karen's assistant assessor, and there was a, um, a memo to the Board of Selectmen that I have in my package here, and this, it appears to be some inconsistencies on who owns it and what it's all about. I don't have...
The size of the process.
I don't hold, I don't have a paper copy, Jack, that I can show it to you.
Have, have you seen this?
The memo, no.
Yeah, um, I'll give you a copy.
I did speak with Karen Mello last week.
Yeah, right, and the quality as well. There's two real problems, uh, as I, as I understand it. She notes that the, the letter is an error as to identifying the possibly seventy-five plus or minus acres, and that the property is unmanaged open space in private ownership. In fact, the property consists of one hundred and forty-seven acres of land and is managed under Chapter sixty-one A, agricultural and horticultural land use. Has received Chapter, uh, discount on real estate taxes since 2010. Um, that portion of the lot, uh, being, can, being offered to DCR is not actually cultivated land, but is land that has standard trees, is classified as necessary and related, which means it supports the farming operation in a significant and substantial manner. The immediate concern is that this land is to be acquired by the Commonwealth, acting through its Department of Conservation and Recreation, without addressing the issue of rollback taxes. DCR feels that it's trade land that meets the definition of forest land under Chapter sixty-one, Section one, and therefore is not subject to rollback tax. As the Commonwealth, through its various agencies such as DCR, acquires more and more land within the town bounds, they're removing potentially income-producing properties from our tax rules. This has happened at least three times during my career with Freetown. Uh, no consideration is given for the loss of taxes that are forgiven, quote-unquote, due to the fact that the property owner is working the land and earning a living and supporting his or her family from the crops raised on the land. Chapter sixty-one A tax discount is not granted just for the promise of not developing land commercially or residentially, but is meant to promote and encourage the continuation of farming as an industry. Uh, in summary, unless the owner wishes to make a voluntary payment, uh, no rollback can be collected. And, um, so I, I believe she's had an opportunity to talk to your office anyway.
She did, uh, she, we had a conversation with, um, our legislative affairs person?
And when Paul arrived today, I, uh, made sure that he had an opportunity, although I wasn't there for the discussion, because he stopped in the treasurer's office first and then went over to see Karen. Do you wanna comment on that discussion, Paul?
I think what she expressed to me is pretty much what we heard in the memo, that her view is that the property was being used for necessary and related activities to a commercial activity, and that, therefore, in her mind, there was a change of use, which, uh, and when that happens, a property coming out of sixty-one A, normally there's an opportunity for the town to collect, uh, or to, to, to pull back part of the taxes that had been forgone over the past five years. And, uh, as I mentioned, I haven't had a chance to review this with Representative or with Senator, and, uh, I think probably the next, uh, action for us, if you agree, would be to go over that memo with the Legislative Affairs at DCR and see...
Does DCR take a position at all, or did they get involved in this piece of it?
What they said, and to permit me, I believe, according to Karen anyway, is that, um, they didn't get involved in tax issues, um, just their interest is in conserving the land.
Our, our understanding of law is that the, um, this land is forested. It has, um, uh, almost no development potential due to the wet nature and the landline, um, site method. And that, uh, as part of sixty-one A forest land, it fits the definition, and so that selling to a conservation agency, according to Chapter sixty-one A, is not constitute a change of use, and so that therefore...
So that's the, that's the...
So that, I think, is the nature of, of the discrepancy.
Well, you know, um, Board of Selectmen, uh, three members of the Soil Board, there's a five-member board, and we have to go do inspections of, uh, sand pits. And we have, like, a dozen of them, maybe ten now. So we go up there at least a couple times a year.
You notice a lot?
Yeah, and, and I, I think, um, that the piece of land that you guys are talking about, it's all forest, has nothing to do with small gravel pit operation. Uh, the biggest operation is really the cranberry bogs, and that, and that's further out towards the road. So I think there may be some misinterpretation on the, uh, on, on the assessor's part as to what piece of land this is, you know?
Her, her notice, her noting that the acreage discrepancy, um, we are subdiv... we are subdividing a portion off of the greater parcel which is one hundred and fifty acres or something.
Hundred and forty-seven, she said.
Okay, thank you.
That's the larger.
That's the larger piece and that includes Mr. Zendis' bogs and his associated property. And we're taking the backland.
Yeah, you're taking the forest part.
We're purchasing.
We're purchasing the part.
Not the useful, not the farm.
It's the forest land way out in back.
Exactly. It has nothing to do with the bogs.
Right, it doesn't. And I know the last time we did a Soil Board inspection, Mr. Zendis was talking to us about this whole process.
Even the one before that?
Yeah, probably too.
Yeah.
I guess the point here is you guys work slowly.
Or you like to talk.
If I could, selectmen, I guess I'd just take this opportunity with DCR sitting in front of us, which is great, is to, you know, again acquiring more and more land is for recreational use is wonderful. Anytime you have the preserved land. The only question I always have is, we've just come off a conversation on maintenance. It's one of our key concerns and those of a lot of people here in Freetown. And that is just the maintenance resources from DCR acquiring and having. We have over five thousand acres between Fall River and Freetown certainly, which is marvelous. We are so lucky to have that. And we encourage everyone to make sure they get out and use it. At the same time, we've got to make sure as a state and as state agencies that we are maintaining that property. That we're putting the resources in whether it's graffiti, whether it's some repairs. So we continue, well, we haven't had a chance to meet, but certainly we talked to Carl and others. And we want to just make sure that, that we're keeping the pedal to the metal as they say. And as some of our friends here in Freetown have said, if it's the Blue Hills, it's well maintained and people are on it. If it's down here, are we being forgotten? And we don't ever want to be forgotten. So we are on that and we want to make sure that these additional seventy-five acres that looks like you're going to acquire, that they're added to the mix. We want to make sure that we have that.
That's very, very much appreciated. I actually had a three-hour meeting with Carl this afternoon to go over all of my projects in the Southeast. And this exact issue came up a number of times.
We've been on it with him. We've been, he knows, he knows who we are. So, thank you. And I just wanted to make that point.
All right, thank you. What's your pleasure? What do you, what is your recommendation to the board?
I don't have a recommendation. It really is, you know, it's an assessing function. Leave that to, you had a discussion with the Board of Assessors yet? And how come the decision?
Do you want to hold on this for the next meeting?
Well, I mean, I think we should. I mean, we both know where the fossil is. We both know what we're talking about here.
Right, but I don't want to dismiss this. I just want to make sure she knows what.
What piece it is.
What piece it is.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait till the next meeting. That's two weeks from tonight. All right.
But if, if what she's saying, if what we believe to be true is true, then we have no problem going forward.
Okay, that's great to hear. That's great to hear. I believe you are.
All right, all good.
All right. You got another one, Sean?
I, no, I don't. That was the last one, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks Dan.
If you just send me the email like I did.
Okay, great.
I have your number.
So we'll, we'll cover this in two weeks.
In two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Sean, Sue had a call, we'll be seeing him soon.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Take care.
All right, it's you.
It's me.
No, talk to her.
See you guys.
Bye. To vote tomorrow, everyone. Just a plug for everyone.
We're still saying vote early and vote late.
As that, as often as you want.
All right. Aggregated box agreement is part of the Freetown Screw Demolition Project. The town agreed to indemnify the butter for potential damage to their property in return for the access of a piece of their land to help get the work done. The agreement and also insured certificate is before you for your approval. It's been reviewed by Town Council and Laura Peckham from Maya. And needs for their approval. What's your pleasure in that?
A commotion to assign the right of entry agreement.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Regional School of Usage or the Fuel Facility Report. I attached the report and the analysis. I sent it to Richard Maderas, Superintendent of Freetown Lakeville Regional School District, for his review. He previously told me he had no problem with it. I have talked to him since I wrote this and, and he has no problem as long as it takes effect with the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year sixteen. I am not yet talked to the water commissions, but I doubt they'd be too concerned. If you saw in the calculations that I did, there's probably fifty dollars worth of charges that might be placed against the water enterprise again in fiscal year sixteen. The amount is about two thousand dollars that are unrelated to the consumption. That is, everybody pays for their own gasoline. These are maintenance costs and administrative costs. And as I said, the Superintendent is not concerned about the two thousand dollar charge. There's a similar arrangement in Lakeville. And I think it's laid out differently, I haven't seen it, but they do charge the school district for use of their facility. What's your pleasure?
Demolition?
Motion to adopt the plan.
All right, second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I want to thank.
Can I just thank you because we've been asking for this for quite a long time?
You have?
Yes.
Well, I want to thank Counton Abbott. He's out with us tonight, but he provided a lot of the backup data and information on the cost and the administrative cost done by the communications folks over at the police station. And he's been waiting a long time for this too, so.
Right.
Thanks to Counton.
Okay.
We done with that?
Yep.
Update on Republic. We have received, Jeff Burdick has signed the agreement for Republic Services. We received it by FedEx the end of last week. And, and we're now working on expediting the security of the easement. And I don't want to take a lot of time explaining the ins and outs of that, but I'm hopeful that we can expedite that in the same way we expedited the agreement. And Peter Bridges is working very closely with me on that. So unless you have any questions, I've prepared, since we just really got it Friday back from them, I'm prepared to let it to the planning board again.
Okay.
When we finally did have an actual copy of it dated by them. And so we changed the date and the same content. And that's in the signature folder for Signature by the Board. You'll miss leave, but at least we can get that off to the planning board.
Okay.
IWT, I've begun to review the proposed host community agreement. And I plan to reach out to someone at DEP on this and there'll be more to come as we get into the mid-agree and the details of that.
That's your baby, huh?
No, that's Lee's baby.
Uh-oh.
My baby.
Oh, you're almost done, that's nice.
My baby's a couple.
Discussion with DES and DOR. I got a long telephone call with Melinda Ordway at DOR. And I've spoken recently with Roger Hatch at DESE. And I haven't yet talked to John Robertson, don't think I need to anymore. I have to talk to Roger Hatch because he was very, very helpful. And I'm preparing a report that will give you some background to what really happened here. But long story short, the target, what do they call it? Target, you gave that back to me, didn't you?
Yeah, you gave me something that was five pages long. I said, I can't read it now.
Okay. They call it the target share. And target share is basically the analysis of the wealth factor. That is, the income levels of the residents in the community as well as the property values in the community. And they use a formula to determine based on comparison of, of the communities in the district to determine which is wealthier than the other for most by, that's what it comes down to. Then they use a formula to assign lesser charge, lesser share, if you will, to those communities that are less wealthy than perhaps the other community. At the beginning of the fiscal year fourteen, the governor found, or the records indicated that, that Freetown was above their target share and Lakeville was below the target share. The governor, first of all, let me just read something from the DOR website. The aggregate wealth model used in the formula since two thousand seven, fiscal year two thousand seven, continues to be in effect and for the first time is fully implemented. What the governor did was he used a hundred percent. He brought the wealth factor into play a hundred percent. Prior to that, it had not been a hundred percent brought into play. So he, all at once, came up with the numbers that would adjust the allocation or the assessment to each community by that wealth factor for the first time to use it a hundred percent, a hundred percent of that wealth factor differential. That's what the governor did. And then the legislature sat down in joint session, the House and the Senate, in the conference committee. And they decided that that was too much of a change to make all at once. And they moved it fifteen percent. They use fifteen percent as a marker. And so the result was the differential in the numbers that we received in July. That's the real deal in terms of what took place here.
At the beginning, you were saying that, yeah, wealthier than Lakeville?
No, we're above the target share. In other words.
Above the target share, meaning?
We're above the level at which.
We're required.
We're required to be if you apply it a hundred percent.
Okay.
And if we apply it a hundred percent, then Lakeville would be below. The governor applied it a hundred percent. The conference committee changed that. And that's why there was a July twelfth final number that came out. It was different from the preliminary number that we got.
Do we know who was on that conference committee?
No, I don't know.
Okay, can we find out who was on that conference committee?
Yep. Now, I, I asked Roger, Roger Hatch and he agreed that, that he would write us a short memo. Just a couple of paragraphs explain what I just explained to you better probably. But he said he would and he would be sending it to Fred Baker, the business manager of the school district, with a copy of mine and a copy to Rita, to share with the Selectmen in the school folks and Finance Committee in both communities. All right? So that's the update on that.
All right. I know that that's on our agenda to talk about. So are you done talking about that because I'm not?
No, well, not if you're not.
No, because there are still questions about, and I know Paul, you have some and I have some. And, and the only way we're going to move forward from all this is to get our questions answered. And the only way to do that is to a satisfaction level that you're satisfied, I'm satisfied, and, and our town is satisfied. And the only way to do that is to maybe engage in a conversation with Roger Hatch, whether we go up there or whether he come down here. So we can go over the formula, the assessment and all of those other things. Net school spending, minimum, and all of those other things. So we can forge a path and move forward because the budget season is coming up. And we need to get that.
Yeah, we need to get that straightened out.
We need to get that resolved.
I mean, my biggest concern, and it will continue to be until I get to receive an acceptable explanation, is why Freetown is paying seven hundred dollars more per child than Lakeville for the same education that all students are getting. I honestly believe that the net school spending issue is a stopgap measure. The requirement, you know, when the state says you've got to spend this much money, that only comes into play if the community isn't, isn't paying their net school amount. It doesn't seem fair to me or reasonable to have the town of Freetown pay seven hundred and fifty dollars more a student than Lakeville for the same education. It doesn't seem right and.
And I don't know the answer to that question, but.
Probably nobody does.
But the only thing, the only thing that I can think about, and I'm not sure how, and I'm not sure if this is true, right? So this is, this is the way it goes. We have less full-time kindergarten students. We have less full-day kindergarten. They have more full-day kindergarten. So our two classrooms of kindergarten count as one. So there could be, it could be fifty kids, but it doesn't count as fifty. It only counts as twenty-five, where they have more full-day kindergarten kids. So their fifty count as fifty.
That has nothing to do with the way the formula.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the way, and that might be why, and I don't know. And that, that's.
It has nothing to do with how they're allocating.
Right, but we're talking about how, why, why Freetown is spending seven hundred dollars more a student. It could, that could be one, that could be one of the reasons.
They're allocating the required net school spending differently than we, than we allocate everything else.
And like I said, that's, and, but isn't that, that was one of the questions that we had before, right?
What about students?
Because remember, they were using the wrong, that's how this whole thing started. They were using the wrong population figure.
They were off by fifteen count because they were using the beginning of the year rather than the end of the year. That, that has nothing to do with this.
Anyway, so as you see, there, you know what I mean? We have a bunch of questions that need to be answered.
I agree. And part of the explanation could very well be the fact that this wealth, wealth factor is really not in place. And, and I think that, I believe Freetown would benefit from that hundred, well, look at them. About a hundred percent. The differential between the governor's budget and this budget is five hundred and eighty thousand dollar differential.
Yeah, it was a swing of five hundred and eighty, it doesn't make any sense.
Right. And, and here's the thing, and I know that that's why the town of Lakeville was so upset. Once we regionalized because, because the formula started to work in our favor. And before we were regionalized, the formula always worked against us. It made, it made us have to pay so much more and Lakeville pay less. So when they, when they say, oh, we're a million over net school spending and da, 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 this town has always done that. We were like the little engines that could and we would and we did. And now that it's starting to reverse and they, they wanted to push to have the change, the, the formula change. And we're like, no, the formula is working for us until last year when that conference committee got together and reversed some of those things that were working in our favor. Brad, you had a question?
We went to Boston, Selectman Sainak, Selectman Baumgarten, myself and the former town administrator all went to Boston. I took time out of my day. I took time out of my day to go up there with them.
And we came back in the snowstorm.
Yeah, and I mean, we came back with no answer. I mean, they danced, they danced all around it up there, and it was, and the representative, she set it all up for us, but I felt they danced all around. They couldn't give a specific answer.
But that was not, this is-
No, this was for the school, the formula, for the school.
These are gonna be the people that were part of the formula, wrote the formula, look at the formula every day. These are the people that, the financial wizard people.
They should have the answers.
Yeah. Roger Hatch is the guy. I mean, he is.
I think we should have, ask him to come down.
If you can, then, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm very nervous of that. As chairman of the finance committee.
Oh, we'll walk there, one way or the other.
Yeah, one way or the other, but I think that-
I mean, we took time out of our day, drove all the way up there, and really, and, I mean, we met with a, how many people?
I think we met with about-
We should get all my questions, you know, laid out in advance for you.
Well, I have my question.
No problem there. He's got a stack.
There's only a handful of questions, very simple.
Right, no, but you get the paperwork to back it up.
Why do you do this way?
Right. So can we, can you work on that so we can get this done?
Sure. And the, I don't know what I did with it, you know.
And if there's ever another conference committee, can we make sure that we have somebody from our side in there?
Yeah, really. I'm trying to find, oh, here we go. In a related matter, school matter, I got a call this past week from Frank Cody, the new superintendent at Old Colony. And Mr. Cody was calling to let us, let me know, to let you know, that they have space for additional students from Freetown if we are interested in paying for them. There are thirty-four students on a wait list to attend Old Colony this year from Freetown. Two of those students placed among the highest of all students who took the entrance exam. We are now at the ninety, which is the budgeted allocation for Freetown. There are ninety students there now. So if you wanted to add those two that scored so well, you're talking about fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars per student and fifteen hundred and seventy-four seventy-seven in additional transportation cost per student, or seventeen thousand five seventy-two seventy-seven, times two is thirty-five thousand one forty-three fifty-four. You wanna add the thirty-four additional students, that's only five hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, but he was especially concerned about the two students that did so well, and asked to give that to-
I guess, why wouldn't he have taken those two students over? If they scored the highest out of everybody, why didn't he take those right away?
Well, he can't take them, he's already got-
No, that would mean that there were only two freshmen coming in.
No, from Freetown?
Right.
No, I don't think so.
Well, that's-
I guess what Lisa's saying is, if these kids were so high in the score, they shouldn't be taken up front.
Then why are we waiting?
But unless, unless they were the highest scoring people on the waiting list, on the waiting list.
That's what I'm saying, are they the highest?
Maybe they came along late, I don't know. We can find out certain.
Could've been a shock, they wanted to.
No, I think the first year, they go all the way around.
He also mentioned that, that the town might wanna consider initiating negotiations on becoming a member of the school. And I think, if you take a look at the information, the statistics that I gave you that came from Mr. Cody on enrollments, you'll see that several of the towns are losing numbers. They were up to five hundred and ninety-two two years ago, and especially Krishnan and one other are dramatically reducing the number of students that are going there. So if they're at five sixty-six right now, and then two years ago they were at five ninety-two, they've got the availability of, you know, some seats, and it might be because of that need that they have in order to get the dollars in, to fill out, round off their budget, that this might be a good time to negotiate with them and perhaps negotiate out some of the unattractive features of the, that were presented to you previously when you tried to negotiate for membership.
Were you there?
No.
In order to negotiate a seat, it would cost the town of Freetown in excess of one point five million. Also, the other member towns would have to give up, permanently give up their seats. So if they had seventy-five seats, each town had to give up, okay, I'll give you five, I'll give you ten, I'll give you, and they would all, they would have to have, and each one of their towns would have to have a vote at town meeting in order to encourage it. Now, am I saying it's not worth another, I've done this three times already, should we do it again? I mean, we may be in a better bargaining position, and it may reduce our cost per student, because you know, we're at that limit of whatever the state sets as a tuition rate we have to pay.
Yeah, we're stuck with that.
So I mean, it could be who was to move forward and check it out again? I have no idea. I'm just saying, in the past, that's what has happened.
You know-
How about checking out New Bedfordville?
We've checked it all out.
I feel, I feel.
We've checked out Bristol Plymouth, New Bedford, and Fall River. But each one of, it's the same thing, it doesn't matter, you still have to pay tuition, and those member towns still have to give you a way in.
And there's a buy-in.
And they're-
A buy-in.
Right, a buy-in.
It's a buy.
There's a reason why the kids have wanted Krishnan to not go to Old Colony, because New Bedfordville offers more in shops than Old Colony does. They have a diesel mechanics, they offer-
Steam engineering.
Electrical steam.
Do they have an option in Krishnan?
They have plumbing. Yeah, they have an option, yeah. Because I know, I know a set of, I know a set of twins, one chose to go to Old Colony, and the other's going to New Bedford High School.
Really? Oh, New Bedford High?
Yeah.
Not New Bedfordville.
Because he didn't wanna go to a quote-unquote vocational school, but he did wanna go to Old Colony.
We're talking about Bristol Lake.
No, we're talking about Old Colony.
Talking about Old Colony.
Oh, this is Old Colony?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was Bristol Lake.
Krishnan had two hundred and seventeen children, hundred and seventeen male and hundred female enrolled in two thousand nine. This fall, they have eighty-nine men and sixty-six women, for a total of a hundred and fifty-five, down from two seventeen.
So Krishnan has two options, they can either go to New Bedford High or Fairhaven High.
Yes. And Old Colony or New Bedfordville.
Right.
Or New Bedfordville, too, yeah.
Well, that-
They have four options.
But they can't be members of all those, they can't be members of Krishnan-
Krishnan doesn't belong to Old Colony, you know, schools.
But not, but not vocational, not New Bedfordville, okay. So they're in the same boat, if somebody wants to go to both.
It's just that New Bedfordville offers so much more.
Right.
A shop that they might-
Would they just get another, I don't know, twenty million bucks to add on to the place?
Yeah, the state, yeah, they're adding on right now, I guess we're, we'll be adding on right now.
It's not to say Old Colony's not a good school.
No, it's a wonderful school for vocational education, and they've done very well in the past.
Yeah. There are seven towns in Freetown that send students to this, to the Old Colony district. And we're at about sixteen percent, have sixteen percent of those seats.
But there are seven out of district communities?
No, no.
Seven total communities.
There are seven communities that send students to Old Colony.
Yeah, but their district is, their region is inclusive of what, Rochester, Krishnan?
Krishnan, Cava, Lakeville, Madison, and Rochester.
That's their region, right?
Yeah.
So they pay the overall rate.
Yeah. And what is their rate, do you know?
Well, yes, I, no, I don't know what our rate is.
I know what our rate is, but we don't know what their rate is.
I don't know what their rates are.
Like, is it a thousand dollar difference to?
I can talk to at least three out of the-
At one time, New Bedfordville took all of that area, Cava.
So let me ask you, you brought this up, you asking us for making this decision?
Well, I'm conveying to you the statement from the superintendent Cody that there are open seats, and if you wanna fill more than ninety, you're welcome to do it if you can pay for it. So I gotta, I should get back to him with some kind of a response. Obviously, you're not gonna go back to town meeting for six hundred thousand, but if you wanna spend an additional thirty-five thousand-
No, and they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't take all of those thirty-four students because they probably didn't score high enough. So out of, out of what the scores were-
No, no, those are students, those are waiting list students that passed the-
From Freetown.
Passed the grade.
So only have two slots?
No, no, no.
And thirty-four slots in the school?
Yeah, they got, they've got six hundred seats, they've got five hundred and sixty-six students.
If you say, yes, you can take two more, then you got two more down at the bottom there, so how can you even go to four?
And that's why we, just like other towns, we cap it at nine.
It's a tough decision.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, because the only thing you know when we're talking on, and I'm a taxpayer, but it's unfortunate if a youngster wants to go to Old Colony that we can't send him because of money.
Well, see, the difference here is that-
But thirty-four is outrageous. To send thirty-four kids-
Particularly on-
Or you can't do that, but I mean-
How many of those kids really still wanna go there?
Well, that particularly, it's particularly unfortunate in that two of those two-
The top two.
Scored among the highest of all students that took the entrance exam.
And the other thing is, is that they have until October first, so if they go into that school and they don't like it, they can, they can drop out. So now, that's why we always go by October first enrollment rate, that's usually, but we always, we stay at the ninety because that's kind of our, our unwritten rule that-
Or two, like you say, with kids who are already there at Freetown, that could drop out, so then they'd need more than thirty-four slots open come October first.
Right.
I feel strongly about Old Colony. My son grew up at Old Colony, graduated at Rutherford University, who has a great job, is on the advisory committee at Old Colony because of his tenure there, and it's a great school, and they did wonders for my son. And it's unfortunate if a kid can't go, if he truly wants to go there, or she. It's a tough call.
Yeah, we're a week and a half into the school, you know what I mean? And I'd like to know through the guidance department, is there anybody that's wavering, as in, they want out?
So we can replace them, couldn't we?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you've got some-
So, right, because that's, you have from September fifth to October first to make up your mind, and you don't know, it's a, it's a thing that, you know, we don't know, that's why we're always playing catch-up the following year. But then, you're right, we leave kids out, unfortunately, that really want to be there. So I think that we should probably do a little more investigating, and we can't hold on this because we're, we're missing, we're missing a, we need to find out more information.
Right, but we can't even say, yes, take two more, because it may not get passed at a town meeting. We don't have the funding.
Right, it's gotta be passed at town meeting.
You know, it's unfortunate the way it works. See, there's no offset against the regular school system.
No.
You know, if there was an offset-
But maybe they'll look into it again, and give it to their regional school system to see what they're doing.
Right.
If they're, if their enrollment dropped and dropped and dropped, and maybe they'll give us a carrot.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Throw us a bone. We've been paying and paying and paying to go to that school. I mean, when a bus goes by my house and has half a dozen kids on it, it's killing.
And that's the other thing, I'm not sure that the transportation cost would be added to that because the bus is empty.
Yeah, that bus is usually always empty.
Really?
Yeah.
Especially after the freshman year. Like you drove to school and-
So I don't know if the transportation cost would be, would be involved in that because that bus is fairly empty. Because by the time they're a junior, they're driving, so they only have the freshmen and sophomores on there.
Yeah, sure.
So, all right.
I got a couple more things. There's a preliminary flood insurance rate map open house at the Austin Intermediate School on September thirtieth, and we get this on the website now, and we're trying to get the word out. FEMA is going to hold this, this open house to explain the flood maps in each community. And so anybody from Bristol Norfolk or Plymouth County are invited, I guess, but these, that's the notice, and-
And you have it up on the website, right?
It's on the website, yeah. And Lauren, also, Lauren Moreau, planning technician, has emailed the fact that she wants to remind the board about the, board wanted to designate Biopark as a forty-three D overlay district, and this is the, this is the draft of the, of the bylaw. And since that's been a subject of discussion before, you may wanna take a vote tonight so I can share that with her and place holder in.
We have to put a, have, they have to have a public hearing, right? So they need a vote tonight.
Well, we need a placeholder.
Can you please hold on a minute? And we'll talk about this when we have our economic development meeting, too, but I'll entertain a motion to move forward with creating the two parcels at Biopark as a forty-three D.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it all in favor.
Hey, Ellen, can you put this, this flood map thing on our calendar?
Thanks. Yes. All right, is that it? Jack?
One more thing, there's a-
Jack, you're killing me.
I know, I know. But you don't wanna find out about this too late. October tenth, Fairhaven is host, Council on Aging is hosting, or Fairhaven at the Council on Aging in Fairhaven is hosting the Fall Legislative Breakfast Meeting with MMA's Legislative Breakfast, October tenth, eight o'clock in the morning. I'm gonna sign up to go. Do either of you wanna sign up today?
Yeah, let's see, October tenth?
Yes.
At what time?
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Friday.
Yeah, put me down.
Okay.
Ellie, can you put that on the calendar, too?
Uh-huh.
Good.
Sure, I wouldn't miss it.
Yeah.
Breakfast with you guys?
She just wants, she wants a breakfast with us. So you too, right? See that, she just wants to come to breakfast with us.
I wanna make sure you're not eating any muffins or donuts. That's all. Guess what?
Are you done?
Are you done?
You're done?
Oh, come on.
Can I comment? Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Jack, this isn't to swell your head, but you've done more work in five weeks than I saw go on here in a long time, and I appreciate it.
And not, not, not that this board was not after anything-
No.
-to have it happen, because we were, it just-
Our meetings are running the way they should run now. I appreciate it.
So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
How about a meeting for our economic development on Thursday the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, that's fine. You're all right with Thursday the twenty-fifth?
Nine o'clock?
Yeah, well, Thursday the twenty-fifth, as long as I don't have, get something on here. Shoot a Four River, that's at five o'clock in the afternoon. Yeah, yeah, I'm good for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thursday the twenty-fifth, that nine?
Nine.
Uh-huh. Okay, all right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of-
Make that motion.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to you.
To me?
Yeah.
For the health, personally. Okay, a letter from Colleen McCroy. Please accept my resignation for the position. I've held in the, on the Board of Registros. I currently have a conflict with schedule, which causes me to be unable, be unavailable to the town when needed. Colleen McCroy, she's been on a long time.
Yeah, she has.
So then we have a letter from Jackie Brown. Please find the attached resignation. The vacancy therefore exists for a Democratic Party member. As required by Mass General Law, please notify by mail the Democratic Town Committee Chairperson, which is Jean Fox, to see if she has any recommendations to submit the board for appointment. In accordance with Mass General Law fifty-one, section fifteen, the Chairman of the Town Committee has the opportunity to recommend a list of three Democratic Freetown qualified voters for the Board of Selecting to fill this vacancy. If the Town Committee has not recommended a part, if no list is received by the Board within forty-five days, the appointment can be made by the Board without reference to the list. To be qualified, a voter has to have maintained their party's enrollment status- The qualified voter has to have maintained their party's enrollment status continuously for at least two years and cannot hold any other office in town by election or appointment. So I...
I'll make the motions to accept her letter, her resignation, and to forward that to Jean Fox.
I'll second it, and please send her a letter of thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's the...
That's it.
That was my...
That's it.
That's all, that's all you assigned to me today.
Right, but I have two, well, not me. That's all you, that's all there is. Two more things so we can get out of here. We need to start talking about union negotiations because we'll be heading into budget season and we want to get those underway. So if Jackie can contact each department and let them know that we're ready, I assume we want to do it the same way we've done it in the past?
Which is...
With the three of us, right? Okay.
And Jack.
And, and Jack. So if we could start those, that process, that would be great.
You don't have Jopia initially, at least?
No, we haven't. We, we kind of just...
Okay. Kind of get a feeling for what's going on.
The feeling for some, because why would, if, if it's easy breezy, then you don't really need to use Jopia, but if it's anything else...
It does get, it does get involved, definitely.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
It will view everything and go forward and...
Yep.
All right, and also, Ally, you wanted us to look over the article submission. Do you have dates for us?
Well, you just need to open and close them.
Yeah, but when do you...
I need to post it by the tenth of October.
Post by the tenth.
And Mark Rich needs that about a week to look at.
So that's the third.
So right, that's the third. So our economic development meeting is what, the twenty-fifth? All right.
When we open it though?
The next meeting is the twenty-fourth, right?
We should open it, what, next week?
We'll open it.
Next Monday?
Yeah. Can we open it now?
If you open it now?
Now, and have it, everything's submitted by the close on, of Friday for our next meeting.
On tw, uh, next meeting is the twenty-fourth.
Right, so the close of Friday, uh, noon on Friday?
That's fine.
Is that going to be all right, Ally?
So you're opening tomorrow and you're going to close on, what, the nineteenth, you mean, that Friday?
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine, because then you have to, when, when are you going to vote on the final, tomorrow, the sixth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and then, and then that'll go to Mark Rich, and then we should be good to go.
Ellie?
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, I'll have Paul entertain a motion to open up the warrant article for submissions for the special town meeting beginning tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, which is the ninth, and closing on Friday at noon, the nineteenth.
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellie, I've been working on that article ten, and can I send it to you so you can have maybe Nadine or yourself, it's, the formatting is so messed up, you can take it from town folks' thing, because whoever did it, I don't think they were using real good process or something. I made changes and I tracked them, so can I send it to you too? Okay, thank you.
Anything else, special on the board?
Well, you got all those, just a quick report on some of the old business items.
Okay.
The bill is paid, number one could be taken off the list.
Okay.
Status of feasibility study, I met the week before last with architectural access for, whether they are engineering.
Yep.